Thank you very much.
So we're moving on to item H three, which is a public hearing for an ordinance for rezoning twelve oh one Piscatah Church Road, William Johnson, Jr. This item was postponed from the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five city council meeting without further advertising. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vaughn. Again, the request is a rezoning from R three residential, single family to conditional district residential, multifamily twelve. North of this request is currently zoned R three with C D R M eight conditional district residential multifamily located further to the northwest. East, south and west requests are also zoned R three residential, single family. The subject property is currently undeveloped. North of the request are single family dwellings with multifamily dwellings located further to the northwest. East, south and west requests are single family dwellings. This property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan and is urban general on the future built form map of the comprehensive plan. These are the four conditions that are offered by the applicant and were advertised as part of the hearing this evening. In recommending approval of the request, staff notes that this does support the comprehensive plans filling in our framework goal to range land uses for more vibrant and livable Greensboro and the creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life, a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed C D R M twelve zoning district as condition does allow uses that are compatible with the surrounding area and are appropriate given its location at the intersection of two thoroughfares. This item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their February seventeenth meeting and was approved. There were three speakers in favor of the request and six in opposition at that hearing. The item was subsequently appealed to the city council, and that's what brings it before the council this evening. I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kirkman? Okay, do have a number of speakers, both for and against, signed up, but Peter Grantham, you have not said if you are in favor or opposed. In favor. We will start with those in favor. And I know that the applicant, B J Johnson, if you want to start off the presentation, and I will also call on the others, Peter Grantham, Pauline Johnson, Crystal Black, Cheryl MacIver, and Keith Peterson, and Nick Blackwood. And I believe we have one person on Zoom, Jason Hicks. There is a total of fifteen minutes, and certainly we will defer to the applicant. Those of you wishing to speak, please go to the window side of the room.
Well, Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. Members of the city council grateful for this opportunity to present my project to you all. I'm B J Johnson. I live at twenty four oh six North Elm Street here in Greensboro, and we're proposing to rezone twelve oh one Piscatah Church Road from R M three to R M twelve. City council, you have done an amazing job of positioning Greensboro for the future as we've seen here on the slide, from Boom Super Sonic to Toyota, to the Tanger Center, to all the things that are going on downtown Greensboro. Greensboro is entering into a golden age, which I'm really excited to be a part of. Over fourteen billion dollars of investment, over six thousand jobs are coming to the area and more. This is an exciting time to be a part of Greensboro. Our project on point eight six acres of land at the corner of Piscatah Church and Willoughby Drive, we're seeking the R M twelve zoning. It'll allow us ten units, but we're limiting ourselves to eight units in response to some community input, as well as talking with a number of people, stakeholders throughout the area. Our proposal will have high-end luxury, modern luxury villas, similar in scope and scale to our project at twenty four hundred North Elm Street. Our goal for this project is to have a compelling development transition that enhances an iconic neighborhood. New Irving Park speaks for itself. There are many that want to be there and for good reason because of where its position, as well as just the history and the beauty of the neighborhood. We're at the corner at the entrance of New Irving Park, and we believe this project will provide a great transition into the neighborhood. To me, the density of Greensboro is a key topic, and we believe that creative density will be the key to Greensboro's future. We do believe that this is directly in line with the Greensboro twenty forty plan. It's going to drive economic growth by expanding the housing choices for both professionals, as well as potentially for retirees that might want to live in New Irving Park, but might not want the scale of the homes they currently have. We'll have an enhancement of the quality of life by the designs and amenities that we'll provide within the project. We're going to have a great efficiency of land use there. We're going to create a beautiful green space and an environmentally appeasing project there at the corner. This project directly addresses the need for more infill so that growth is not happening outside of the city, but growth can happen within the city limits. It would definitely strengthen the tax base for the city, but also enhance the values of the neighborhood, and it directly supports the initiative of Greensboro's ten thousand, ten thousand new homes plan. It's an ambitious initiative, but we believe this project and projects like this will enhance that goal for getting there. Twelve oh one Piscatah Church is the perfect intersection of both housing diversity, responsible infill, as well as economic benefits. As covered already, we believe that this project will definitely enhance not only the neighborhood, but also help Greensboro achieve its goals as well. So this is the part I'm most excited about because the process works. We initially began our process on January third with our technical review committee for a sketch plan. We got some great feedback there. We had our initial neighborhood meeting on February second, where we had people both in person, as well as on Zoom, to be able to present these plans to the neighborhood. On February, actually seventeenth instead of eighteenth, we had our Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, for which the zoning committee passed eight to one. And from there, as is already mentioned, the process was appealed on March eighteenth. We asked for a continuance of the hearing, just because we felt there was a need for more neighborhood feedback. In response to that, we held a follow-up neighborhood meeting at Craft Center on March twenty ninth that was attended, and also I was able to attend virtually. I was not, I was out of town, not able to be in person for the April fifth meeting that the neighborhood scheduled at Lewis, Lewis Recreation Center. Because of this community engagement, our project is in a much better place. We started off with the initial plans that we sent to a technical review, the sketch plan, and got the feedback, and then through engagement with the neighbors, we had, we had to adjust the plans because the neighborhood made sense. There was not a need for eight driveways onto Willoughby, so we had to adjust our plans, took that out, and we believe the project is positioned now in a much better place, and I don't know if it gets to there without the community engagement that we were able to have. So this is our plan. We have eight units here on the corner of Piscatah Church and Willoughby. Again, modern luxury villas. We conditioned ourselves to ensure that there's, safety is our utmost concern, so we're limiting ourselves to two driveways onto, only on Willoughby, no access on Piscatah Church. And we do believe that it's important for us in terms of maintaining the character of the neighborhood, so the landscaping and sidewalks, all those things will help enhance that corner and provide a great compelling transition into the neighborhood. The other conditions that we have are we're committed to providing high-level materials, high-quality materials, as well as already mentioned, those two access points. Again, our goal here is to enhance the neighborhood and not do anything that would take away from an unbelievable neighborhood at New Irving Park. We'll be able to do this in a responsible way, but maintain, even though there is a stream not adjacent to our property, but one over, we'll be able to address some of those issues with hopefully the work of the city to make sure that that corner environmentally is sound, as well as working with, you know, the technical review to make sure that that corner stays as safe as possible. One thing that we're excited about, again, that came from directly with the community engagement, was the need for some residents of New Irving Park that desire to stay within New Irving Park, but don't have a property, a newer property that they could downsize into. And we believe, just again, by the neighborhood engagement and feedback, that this project will be able to address some of those issues and provide an outstanding opportunity for the people to stay in New Irving Park, but be able to have a smaller footprint for which they would be really proud of. Again, Greensboro is on the rise. I travel frequently with work, and I really knew that Greensboro is really growing. On a flight from Denver to Greensboro, direct flight, they were asking people to give up their seats. Greensboro is growing, and there's nothing that we can do to stop that growth. Again, because of the work that the city council has done, this is a place that people want to be, which is exciting. But it's going to be, it's going to take creativity in terms of the density that is going to be required to allow the city to continue to grow. A couple of projects I think are worth looking at that have done a great job of this, some older, some newer. Philadelphia Lake Court, I love driving up Elm Street. You don't really know you get there, that their property is there, until you get right up on it. They've done a great job of landscaping, but it's on a busy thoroughfare, but tucked away, and then landscaping has been amazing there. Hayden Park, I know there's a lot of opposition there at the corner of Friendly and Avondale, but again, the project is in the works, and I think that's an example of the creative density that Greensboro is going to need moving forward. Willoughby Inn, right across the street from the proposed lot. Again, there were a lot of, you know, challenges with the site and things like that, but it's a well-planned multifamily development that is right there within walking distance, across the street from our proposed development. And then our project at the Emery and North Elm, again, there are a lot of opposition toward that project and wondering how it could be done, but we do believe wholeheartedly that it has enhanced that corner and provided more quality infill for the city of Greensboro. Again, as already mentioned, we're limiting ourselves to eight units. This is directly from community input. Those two driveways we talked about, no access point on Piscatah Church. And again, just even driving by there constantly and being there, you know, I see people constantly walking on the streets. I don't feel that is safe. It's providing a sidewalk where they're, you know, not turning right onto Willoughby from Piscatah Church, there'll be a place to walk, and it'd be a beautiful place to walk, especially by the way that we'll take care of the landscaping there on property. We've already mentioned that the tax benefits and economic benefits of a property like this will have, but in engagement with the community, they've, we've kind of come to three options for all the conversations we've had, and the proposal was, one, maybe the neighbors of New Irving Park buys back the space and donates it as green space to the city. While again, it will keep the corner beautiful, I don't believe this is efficient use of land, and I don't believe it is in line with Greensboro's twenty forty plan. Yes, it would enhance the character of the neighborhood because the people have done an amazing job of maintaining that corner over many, many years, but again, Greensboro is growing, and it's, there's a need for more infill development. It's currently zoned for two single-family homes, and while this, you know, it kind of walked toward the ambitious goals of the ten thousand in twenty forty plan, we need a higher density of development to be able to accomplish these ambitious goals. We would do a great job in terms of maintaining the character of the neighborhood, but again, only two single-family homes to me is not an efficient use of land based upon the infrastructure that has already been a place for the city. That's why I do believe wholeheartedly that this R M twelve zoning checks all the boxes with efficient land use, which I believe is the commitment of the city council. It's in line with the twenty forty plan. Again, we will do an amazing job of maintaining the character of the neighborhood in New Irving Park. So again, just to reiterate, we're excited. Greensboro is entering into its golden age. It's an amazing time to be a part of Greensboro. We believe this project represents a balanced, responsible project that aligns with that growth, both for the city and the community goals. This is an opportunity to help, you know, send a message to other developers in Greensboro that Greensboro is open for business, and we can help shape the future of Greensboro. So a vote for rezoning for here, we believe, I believe wholeheartedly, again, that this is a vote for a more stronger and vibrant Greensboro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any initial questions? Or I can open it up for?
Any questions for Mr. Johnson at this point? There is four minutes and forty-three minutes left.
Hello, my name is Peter Grantham. I'm actually a homeowner about a half mile from this site. We previously lived on Winwood Drive about, it's right in this neighborhood as well. My wife and I really struggled to purchase a home in this area. We were able to do it last year. We both have really good jobs, and we both really struggled to buy a home that we felt we could support a family in. We think this neighborhood is wonderful, but over the years, that affordability has been lost. I don't feel that average people can afford to buy a home in this area anymore, and I think that's a real shame. Affordability is a function of availability. Inherently, if you increase availability, you will increase affordability. So I, I'm here to support this. I don't think that the housing goals of Greensboro can just be met with apartments downtown or with single-family homes built thirty minutes outside of the outer belt. I think we need to focus on scaling where we can, and every unit counts.
Thank you.
That's all.
Good afternoon. I just want to thank council in advance for doing-
If you'd give us your name.
-Crystal Black, eleven twenty Highstone Drive. Thank council in advance for doing what they should be doing and voting on this project based on land use only. I am stating that because that has been the premise of your decisions in southeast Greensboro when we have had development of over fifteen hundred to two thousand units, that we have added the density in our area, and every time we come to this podium, we bring the same defenses of too much density, flooding, the same things that we hear about this development. So we want you to consider the same way that you consider our developments, this development. So thank you in advance for considering land use only.
Thank you.
Cheryl MacIver, four zero four, West Montcastle Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina. Just piggybacking off Crystal, we do appreciate you guys being consistent in the decisions that you make. We do know that for PLZ twenty five oh four, where we, West Vandalia, there were seventy-seven affordable apartments approved on the same topography of land. Actually, that lot was, our lot was probably much worse. It had a blue line stream and had two other creek beds stemming from it, and you guys approved that nine to zero. I don't think eight-town homes, luxury townhomes, will hurt anyone. Our lot also was a corner lot, limited site visibility. You can't change that they are both similar, and Mayor Pro Tem asked during that particular vote to city attorney, we can only consider land use, right? And the city attorney said yes, and you guys passed that seventy-seven unit for nine zero. So I will ask that you keep the same consistency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Peterson, thirty-three seventeen Winchester Drive. Every month, the Planning and Zoning Commission has a mandate. They go out and visit properties and consider land use only. Far too often during our meetings, I get a loving rebuke from the attorney saying we can't consider nothing else. And so when a commissioner's went out to visit this specific property and saw the product that this developer was bringing, we was happy about it. Out of all the developers thus far that we have seen in a twelve-month period besides Somerville, this project is Class A, and I would hope you guys support this with approval. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Pauline Johnson of twenty-four oh six North Elm Street in Greensboro. I'm just grateful to be here with you today, and I just want to reiterate just the care and diligence that has been given in listening to the responses from New Irving Park community, whether we were able to be at every meeting. We had representatives at every meeting, and each of those cares and were taken in consideration with the plan that was presented before you today. There has been a lot of interest in this area in terms of real estate. Many people have come to our Realtor asking and inquiring how they can be a part of this new experience in this neighborhood. So there is a lot of interest there, and I just want that to be noted. Thank you for your time on today.
So that leaves us with one second. I think we will now turn to those in opposition, and I'll just read the names out. You have a total of fifteen minutes, so as you speak, please keep those behind you in mind. Don Leahy, Joanne Leahy, Gabe Niermer, Mickey Adams, John Nosick, Tim Sohan, Donna Eason, Ed Lipinski, Burke Edwards, Linda Register, Regina Clark, and Knox Hughes. And you have a total of fifteen minutes.
My name is Donald Leahy. I live at eighteen oh four Tiffany Place, just south of twelve oh one Piscatah Church Road. Previous owners of twelve oh one Piscatah Church Road, including Cornwallis Corporation, the original developers of New Irving Park wisely deemed the proposed site unsuitable to be rezoned for multifamily housing, and it and the developer's plan is an inappropriate use of the land. It sits at the entrance to the neighborhood in a very busy intersection, and the lot isn't even close to any of the growth tiers proposed in the Greensboro twenty forty comprehensive plan. The proposed development does not align either with the existing residential pattern. New Irving Park was designed for mixed-use housing, but with specific zoning requirements. There are no townhouses on Willoughby Boulevard by design for many reasons, including safety. The corner of twelve oh one Piscatah Church Road and Willoughby Boulevard is not only a very busy, but an increasingly dangerous intersection. It also serves as a main route to Moses Cohen Hospital for emergency vehicles, which can barely navigate that intersection now. This rezoning also is in violation of Greensboro's comprehensive plan, which falsely states there's an activity center nearby. There is no activity center in the area. The developer's plan also applies missing middle housing to luxury townhouses. How can that be? The proposed development and rezoning risk serious damage to my home, my neighbor's homes, and city property for the benefit of one person and to the detriment of a neighborhood. The negative impact and precedent of this rezoning far outweigh the singular utility of one person's proposed development. I urge you to vote no to the impermissible spot zoning inherent in rezoning twelve oh one Piscatah Church Road.
Hello, I'm Regina Clark. I'm from twenty-eight oh two Lake Forest Drive in Greensboro. My property backs up to Buffalo Lake on the northern side. I'm one mile from the proposed property, which that site will significantly affect Buffalo Lake, because what happens at twelve oh one Piscatah Church does not stay at twelve oh one Piscatah Church. Here's a photo of a backyard that's flooded. It's a quarter mile downhill from Willoughby from the property site. Our neighborhood's water, sewer, and stormwater systems were designed for low-density use. They are now overwhelmed. The storm drains overflow, backyards and basements flood, and sewer backups are becoming more, increasing, and all the overflow goes into Buffalo Lake. So in two thousand eight, this is what Buffalo Lake looked like from my backyard, just so you can see the lake. This is what it looks like now. Buffalo Lake has experienced significant sediment runoff. It's unrecognizable almost as a lake. It's only going to accelerate the runoff, and the neighborhood is actually going to lose the lake at some point. There are two creeks and multiple storm drains that flow directly, directly into the lake. One creek starts at the proposed construction site. This higher-density development could push our fragile infrastructure to the breaking point, leading to maintenance issues and future costs, which could fall back to the city and the taxpayers. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Gabe Niermer. I'm at seven oh one Willoughby Boulevard. I'm the very first house on the right. I'm the adjacent property to the proposed property with a small wooded buffer in between. Quickly, I'm not a wealthy man. I'm not important. I'm not a famous developer with a lot of influence. What I am is a very, very hard-working, dedicated father, husband, and employee. I was recruited here years ago by Moses Cohen Hospital. I've worked my butt off in this town, holding two, three jobs, side hustles, everything, trying to finally move into New Irving Park. I bought this house three years ago, finally, after saving and scrimping and doing everything I possibly could to get into the neighborhood I think that most of Greensboro is trying to move into. It was my dream, dream for the family. It's fantastic. I knew for a fact that when I bought this house, that there would not be high-density housing, townhouses, apartments in the lot right next to me, because it was zoned for three houses per acre, and it's not even an acre. So what, maybe two? There was one on it years and years ago. It's inappropriate to put a bunch of townhouses right next to all of these single-family homes. The entire street, the entire street of Willoughby is single-family homes. The cross street of Winwood, all single-family homes. I mean, from end to end, not a single spot on any of those where they dead-end on both ends are all single-family homes. The townhouses do not fit at all. No matter what anybody says, how wonderful it'll be to have this density, single-family homes would be wonderful. He could build beautiful two single-family homes in there that would probably make him a ton of money, and the neighborhood would be happy to see it. We'd be happy to see it. Build the houses that it's designed for. It's already zoned for it. Just build what's already zoned there. We don't want rezoning. There's no argument for rezoning. The community doesn't want it. No one in our neighborhood wants rezoning at all. We want him to build two nice houses. All of these community meetings, our red line was no rezoning. Do what you want. Build your houses. We'd love it. It's a bad precedent. When you start rezoning, I think the word I just heard from Don was spot rezoning these small parcels. If you can, someone can tear down their house in the middle of a neighborhood and build a giant apartment complex, what's to stop it from anywhere else in Willoughby or Winwood? Or in anybody else's neighborhood, for that matter? It's very inappropriate. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mickey Dearie Adams. I live at six oh two Blanton Place. I've lived there for thirty-six years. We built our home. This rezoning request is not consistent with the land development ordinance. We were advised to look at the land use issues, and I did. Key components of the Greensboro land development ordinance are, number one, orderly growth. This proposal does not meet that standard. Number two, protect property values. Well, as we've already explained, there are issues with this particular lot, and it cascades into all kinds of issues, disrupting property values. Number three, ensure public safety. Again, this particular project is going to increase safety and infrastructure issues. Number four, balance development and environmental and community needs. Due to the inherent slope issues and drainage issues of this point eight six acre lot, we cannot support, it cannot support the proposed multifamily development. Number five, it aligns with the Greensboro long-term vision and includes the Greensboro twenty forty comprehensive plan. This zoning request is in conflict with the land development ordinances and the current existing zoning. It also disproportionately benefits a single property owner without logical relation to the surrounding area or creating a real public benefit, and we're citing the nineteen eighty-eight Chisholm versus Guilford County decision. Since twenty sixteen, Realtor dot com has listed Greensboro among America's top ten greenest cities. Our neighborhood is one of the greenest in Greensboro. The local government also works hard to live up to the green in the name by indicating land use policies to protect green spaces. We're number nine out of ten cities nationwide. Let's keep it that way.
Good evening. I'm John Nosick. I reside at forty twelve Hazel Lane. The residents of New Irving Park believe that rezoning this parcel only serves the interest of the developer and does not take into consideration the four thousand residents of New Irving Park who are opposed to this. A rezoning, there's no public benefit to changing this zoning. It's only going to be a detriment to public safety. Residents of the, of the New Irving Park oppose this proposal, again, only benefiting the developer and ignoring the four thousand residents of New Irving Park. Thank you.
Good evening. Tim Sohan, six twenty four Willoughby Boulevard. I'm going to say unequivocally, the vast majority of the sixteen hundred households in New Irving Park oppose this rezoning. We have data to prove this, and just days before the zoning commission hearing, we issued a petition with over a hundred and seventy- a petition with over 175 signatures on several days' notice opposing this rezoning. The minutes are wrong from the zoning commission meeting. It is 175 signatures we submitted. Shortly thereafter, we formed the Friends of New Irving Park. This is a grassroots organization in the neighborhood opposed to this rezoning. The core committee meets every once to twice per week. It's 22 people. We have over 475 members on an email list. On March 30th, we went door-to-door in the neighborhood and distributed over 700 flyers. I'm on almost every Ring camera on Willoughby Boulevard. On March and April, we held in-person meetings, in total, to organize the community against this rezoning. In total, we had over 200 people show up. We've been completely forthright and communicated with local news outlets, including the News and Record, the Triad Business Journal, and very recently Fox News. With all this communication, all this neighborhood outreach, we have received almost nobody in support of this rezoning. Virtually everyone is opposed to it. Part two, I'm going to cut short because there's a lot of people in line that need to speak behind me, but I'm going to use the term "impermissible spot zoning". This is the very definition of that. If you look at every adjacency to this property on all four of the corners, at the head of Willoughby Boulevard and Pisgah, all single-family, and the immediate adjacency to the west of this property is single-family, that if you were to rezone this for multifamily, that would be the definition of impermissible spot zoning. Please consider that in your decision. Thank you very much.
Hey, good evening. My name's Burke Edwards. I live at 807 Blanton Place, which is just around the corner from the proposed rezoning. I think there's this belief that New Irving Park is a very affluent neighborhood. Yes, there are parts of it that are very nice, but it is overall a master-planned community, one of the first in Greensboro, to be exact. There are starter homes, middle-level homes, you know, homes for, you know, very affluent people. There are townhomes, condos, apartments. There is a middle school, Meddon Hall Middle School. There is a senior living community. It is literally the definition of a master-planned community. It is what Greensboro asked for. It is what the city council saw in the '70s and '80s when this was approved by Cornwallis Development. It is what I think the city council is looking for today. So we would just like you to take a holistic view of the area as a whole and see that it does have everything the city is looking for, inclusive of those playgrounds, green space, bike trails, et cetera. So I just wanted to dispel that myth. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Ed Libske. I'm a retired builder and civil engineer with 50 years of experience. From, I have relationships with develop, more than, between a dozen and two dozen different developers who occasionally have had me speak for zoning changes, and I've generally been speaking in favor of them. However, in this particular case, I'm opposed to this changing of the zoning for the main reason that it doesn't make sense. The site is simply too small to support eight to 10 units, which will be allowed if you change the zoning. The sketch, this is a hand-drawn sketch that I made up, that in yellow you can see is the area that's required for setbacks because of the thoroughfares on Willoughby and Pisgah Church and the 17-lane intersection up there. What's left, assuming that the site is flat, is white in the middle, is only approximately a half of an acre. So you're not putting eight to 10 units on 8.86 of an acre. You're putting on less than a half of an acre because that doesn't, to flatten the site, means retaining walls. It means diversion berms to stop sedimentation controls. I mean, the list goes on. It means site swells around the buildings to move water in. There's, all of these things are fine and can be done, but they take space. They take up room, which means by the time you put these things in, let alone what Mr. Johnson was saying, that he was going to have green space and make all these other things to make these units nice and look good, and that's what everybody was expecting, that's not going to happen because he does not have room to do it. The, another thing that complicates the amount of room is the number of trees. When they come out, there's a deep root ball which creates a steep slope, and any site contractor will tell you that the hardest thing to do is stabilize the slope. There will be slopes that need stabilizing. There's one alongside of Willoughby that if that is not stabilized, Willoughby Boulevard itself will be in danger. I beg of you to please don't change the zoning. The zoning was correct. The zoning allows him to put in two units, and he, there's enough space to do a good job with those two units.
Thank you. There will be a five-minute rebuttal for those who haven't had the opportunity to speak yet. I will call upon Mr. Johnson for his five-minute rebuttal. If there's any time left over, we do have one person on Zoom.
Thank you. I'm not immune or turn of death fear to my friends in New Irving Park. They have valid concerns. This is their neighborhood. This is the neighborhood something dreamed about being in too. So I'm very sensitive and have listened consistently to their comments, their concerns, and we've adjusted our plan a number of times. But, you know, the community engagement aside, I know the focus is land use. Anytime you get into development, you're always going to be faced with challenges. Going through what we went through at 2400 North Elm, I wouldn't wish that on anybody. But we came out on the side and we were successful with it. So it's going to take a lot of creativity. I've traveled to different places. I was in Portland, Oregon this past weekend, and, you know, I'm acutely aware of kind of some of the things now being in development, but seeing some of the creativity that's been done in different areas would be Nashville. I've been paying attention to these things, and it can be done. It can be done. It's not going to be easy, but it can be done responsibly. It can be done well, and I believe looking 20 years in the future, we'll be really happy with the amount of trees that we planted, how sustainable that lot will be, and the beauty that it's going to create for the neighborhood. Yes, there's going to be some pain in the next, in the first years of the development. You're going to have to uproot trees, all the things that Ms. Libske mentioned. I've had the chance to walk, the privilege of walking the property with Ms. Libske several times, and he's been awesome in terms of giving me all these things to understand and to note about that. And I appreciate that feedback, and yes, it's going to be challenging, but I do believe with what we've experienced, the success we've had at 2400 North Elm, and the creativity of the team that I'm putting together right now, that we'll be able to overcome all those challenges. In terms of the master plan that Mr. Edwards mentioned, yes, it was, as I've heard, perfectly planned neighborhood in New Irving Park. I cannot imagine Mr. Ruth would say the Greensboro that he saw then, that he have a chance to envision what Greensboro is becoming and what it is right now. Greensboro is totally different. Greensboro is on a growth and a rise track that rivals most mid-sized cities throughout the nation. So yes, it was a perfectly planned neighborhood, according to many there. I understand that, but however, Greensboro is changing and is going to need more projects like this. I'll continue to listen. There are a number of people that are supportive of this project. Not everyone over the 4,000 to 8,000, however you draw the lines of New Irving Park, not everybody is opposed. There are many that are excited about the potential of it. And even my neighbor next door that stays at 1207 Pisgah Church, we've had conversations. She's not opposed to it, and she's the one that's directly impacted by it. So yes, not everybody is opposed to this project. I understand, remain sensitive, and I want to continue with the community engagement to make sure that everybody's happy. Of course, regardless of decision, somebody might not be happy tonight. I completely understand that. But it's my goal to provide the community engagement and to be able to find a way for all of us to win. Might not feel like it right now, but in 20 years, we'll look back and say this was the right thing for Greensboro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, just one quick question. The entrance to the site, how are you handling the parking part of it? Were you entering in the site away from the intersection?
Yes.
And then how are you handling the parking traffic going into your site?
That's the, that's the key issue, and I'd be remiss of saying it's not going to be, takes some creativity, but we are at least 100 feet away from the intersection, so we'll be down further. We'll have two private entryways into there. Each home will have a driveway as well as garage to provide for the parking there. Again, there's always a chance that people park in the street, but we'll be vigilant with, throughout the HOA to make sure that that's minimized. Even trash is a concern. How are we going to do trash, but having sidewalks there and being able to move the trashcans, you know, further down the line? We're thinking through all those things. And again, I'm not the expert. TRC is going to give me a lot of feedback in terms of what should be done and how that's going to be done there. But yes, parking is going to be the critical thing, but we have, with the two entryways as well as the amount of parking for each home, we believe we had overcome the challenges there and create a safety there.
I mean, you're not concerned about the flooding, are you?
It's going to be an issue. The stream does-
That's on the city side, though, is it not?
The city's, that's the city's responsibility, but I would like to partner with the city to see if we can find a solution. I'm grateful for this opportunity because maybe the city doesn't understand the issue now that we have all these people here that it's a major concern or there's, there's an awareness that's been brought to the city because of this. So hopefully, regardless of what happens tonight, everybody knows that there's an issue with the stream, there's an issue with Buffalo Lake, and hopefully there could be some solutions there, but I'm willing to continue to work with the neighbors of New Irving Park to provide a solution.
Great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? We did have one speaker on Zoom. Mr. Hicks? There's 54-
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm still here. I'll be real brief. Sorry, what was that?
54 seconds left.
Thanks so much. So we've heard a lot of talk about the character of the neighborhood, and I would just ask, what does it say about the character of a neighborhood that mobilizes to keep people out and stop development that would be beneficial? And what does it say when white residents fight harder against townhomes than they ever have against any other injustice in this city? And this is why certain families are priced out. This is why, you know, the community remains divided. And, and really, this is why we still feel the weight of redlining, as one speaker said. You know, that was their redline. That's why we still feel the weight of redlining in 2025. So I would just ask the council, will you do what's comfortable? Or you do, will you do what's right? And vote in order with the land use and land use only. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, those in opposition have five-minute rebuttal. You can come up in whatever order, I believe, everybody. Well, there are a few people who didn't have an opportunity to speak. Donna Eason and Linda Register? And Joanne Leahy? But you may have a different order, so go ahead.
My name is Knox Hughes, 3808 Hazel Lane. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the city council tonight. And as we can acknowledge, creative diversity can be a good thing, but it can also mean that if one of the little things that you were creative about goes wrong, then it's a whole mess. And so we must look into the future and to see if this creative diversity is making a problem. And I would also like to respond to the last speaker on the approval. We are not trying to keep people out. We're talking about the smart use of land and the protection of a neighborhood and people. Thinking about creative diversity is a good thing, but if it goes wrong, it goes downhill fast. So keep that in mind, that it may meet today's specs, but what will it look like in five years if something goes wrong? Thank you.
Hey, it's Burke Edwards at 807 Blanton Place. Again, I just want to touch on two points. One is about Ms. Hightower's question related to traffic. At that intersection, there are actually four lanes on Willoughby. There are four, three northbound, one southbound. The two driveways, proposed driveways would enter on the one southbound lane. That is the road that parents take their children to Meddon Hall Middle School every morning and pick them up in the afternoon on trash day. If you have eight units, think two units, 16 receptacles out there for the trash pickup to manage that intersection. It is a very, safety is a big concern. And one other point that I want to touch on, I think you guys were presented the Summerfield Farms proposal a couple weeks ago. Within that, there was a master plan, green space. Just think, in 30 years, people had bought into that, and a future city council said, you know what? That green space, we love multifamily right there. And that's the precedent that we don't want to set. This is setting potential precedent for not just New Irving Park, other neighborhoods, and potentially further down Willoughby and New Irving Park specifically. So that's our major concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to touch on parking briefly. I think Ms. Hightower is on a great line there. Total, he showed in his drawing, 16 spots for eight houses, and there will be tons of street parking. The Garden Club this, today, was working on the corner, doing their normal beautification, and they parked all down the street, and it was a disaster. And they didn't, they are very respectful. They've been doing this a long time. It was very, very, very tight there. Now imagine cars pulling in and out at the same time and do that at 5:30 when everybody's coming home from work. It is a safety issue to have that much density on a busy corner. All the other townhouses, townhouses in Irving Park are well-designed with separate entrances, so none of the houses are pulling out onto this main road. They're pulling out through planned drives. This decision you guys are going to make today will be a few minutes for you. It'll be a year worth of work for him. It'll be 30 years, God willing, for me, that I'm going to have to deal with that next door. And my kids, who are small children who play in those woods and play on the street, are going to have to deal with a massive increase in cars and a very, very high risk of cars pulling in and out that were never there before. I would like very quickly, if everyone here who's opposed to this, who's opposed wouldn't mind standing up so they can see what New Irving Park opposition looks like. This is what, this is New Irving Park. These are all the people who don't want this to happen today. I think that's pretty significant, to get that many people mobilized down here. How many times have you seen that happen down here, that this many people were like, "This is not for us"? That is mobilization. We're not happy with this. We want them to build two houses. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Tim Suhan, 624 Willoughby Boulevard. I'll keep this very brief. Speaking on behalf of the Friends of New Irving Park that represent the vast majority of the neighborhood, I agree with everything that has been said here in opposition to this rezoning. Please make the right decision, and I'll leave time on the clock. Thank you.
I just want to add one thing in rebuttal to the comment that was made about this being affordable from the developer. This is not going to be affordable. I'm a builder, and I know what it costs to do this stuff. It will not be affordable.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn, City Council. My name is Joanne Leahy. I'm at 1804 Tiffany Place. I just wanted to also share my opposition. I was, I had gone to both meetings with a complete open mind. I went to Mr. Johnson's neighborhood meeting, and I went to ours, and I really took it into consideration very seriously because we do need more growth and more affordable housing in Greensboro and middle housing. But I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant or those in opposition? Or can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by Mr. Matheny, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. All in favor, say aye. Aye. That passes eight to zero. I would like the city attorney to just address the topic of spot zoning since it was brought up a couple of times. Chuck, you need your mic.
Thank you. Spot zoning is where you have a drastic transition, like, say, this land, this particular lot in the middle of a residential community was going to be used for light industrial. That would be spot zoning likely, but it's done on a case-by-case basis. Various levels of residential is not going to be viewed as spot zoning.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Matheny?
I will do my best, Madam Mayor, to be effective and efficient, at least I hope to be effective. Somebody said there has been a lot of conversation about this, and I've seen things online, and I've certainly heard from my constituents. It's part of transparency. I am a neighbor in this neighborhood or a resident in this neighborhood, and it's been good that there's a lot of discussion about this. One of the interesting things in regard- One of the interesting things in regarding the land use only discussion is that this is what it is about. It is about land use. And I I saw something that somebody stated or posted that no opinion should be heard or we shouldn't consider the opinions of people. And we don't consider opinions of people in other districts. And that's just simply not true. I think it's important for us to hear from residents of the neighborhood. And I do think, regardless of what district it is, that it's impressive to see the amount of people coming out and the interest they have in this rezoning. You know, somebody's going to help me. Are you going to help me? Thank you. I've got a couple of things I wanted to just kind of highlight. And then I'm going to speak to some of the comments that were said from the developer. While you're pulling that up, I I just want to say, I did meet with Mr. Johnson. We talked numerous times. You know, I think that one of the times that we spoke, one of our first meetings, we talked about how to develop Greensboro. What needs to be done? How is Greensboro going to look? How would you help developers? And I want to speak to that in a little bit too, because I think that's important. Go ahead. You had it. I hate to do this. I wish I could flip them up here. Just let's go through it real quick. Okay, so to to somebody's point, I think it's actually Mr. Johnson that said it was, New Irving Park is a perfectly planned neighborhood. And the reason why it's a perfectly planned neighborhood is not because the city of Greensboro did it. This property from Combe Boulevard North through Lake Jeanette was actually owned by Combe Mills Corporation. And it had a subset division called Corn Wallace Development with with a gentleman named Dick Ruth that ran the development company. Of course, you know, they used to own Buffalo Lake all the way north through Lake Jeanette. And so when they designed New Irving Park in this plan, it was the exact specs, as was stated by Mr. Johnson, of what is the comprehensive plan. And this neighborhood includes apartments. We have apartments on a major thoroughfare, which is North Elm. We have townhomes that are attached, that are properly designed, where the ingress and egress is is there. We have smaller homes that folks graduate to, which, you know, eighteen hundred to twenty-three hundred square feet. There are larger homes. There's assisted living facilities. There's an office, because it is in my backyard. It was actually the first office I worked at, which brought me to Greensboro. And as somebody mentioned, there's a school. And obviously, I put insert image, which I forgot to do. So it includes what is deemed the missing middle housing. Like, don't hold it against this neighborhood because the planner, Mr. Ruth from Corn Wallace Development, got it right. Now, the last thing in here, and it's highlighted, and you can't see because of the closed captioning, this is not a NIMBY neighborhood. Now, sure, I was at the zoning case and, you know, maybe there was a little, some things said, but this is not a NIMBY neighborhood. This is not a, not in my backyard neighborhood. And there's two examples I'll show you. The third would be Emery, which Mr. Johnson and his wife, who you met earlier, developed. So let's go to the next one. This is, to the left, is Gingerly Way. Those are attached townhomes. Nobody fought against that. Nobody said, don't build a townhome in New Irving Park. So you cannot say that this neighborhood is a not in my backyard neighborhood. The one on the right is a large development. D.R. Horton or somebody like that built. By the way, there's not a one brick on that development. So when we're talking about aesthetics and what I've heard from aesthetics, not all the stuff in New Irving Park is brick or 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 situated perfectly as somebody would want. This is a large development that pushed a lot of, you know, wildlife out, cut a bunch of trees. It backs up to the Smiths' house. It backs up to Mr. and Ms. Smith, who y'all affectionately know as Smitty. The one on the left is Gingerly Way. The one on the right is Finley Ridge. These are both back up into New Irving Park, this neighborhood, and are both attached townhomes. That nobody fault. Okay, so we're not just fighting anything. Next. Uh, did you skip one or no?
I think I skipped one.
Did you? There you go. These are just the smaller homes. And what you have here are, you literally, you have townhomes to the bottom left. You have townhomes across the street. It was properly designed via traffic. And traffic, you know, is, whether you want it to be or not, part of land use, ingress, egress, and how things work. But you have townhomes that were properly designed. You have smaller houses that people gravitate to, so you can have apartments, the attached smaller lots, and then maybe potentially larger homes. Go ahead, next. The planning department comments that Mr. Kurtman was talking about, these are straight out of the planning department notes. The top one, adjacent land is single family with drainage. This is not something I said. This is not something that I created. This was straight out of the planning and zoning notes. The adjacent land is single family. Eight townhome units like this is not compatible with single family. And as was mentioned earlier, when Willoughby was designed, it was designed appropriately and it did not have any attached dwellings or eight townhomes on a small lot. Those townhomes were positioned accordingly and so we all could work synergistically. Piscatah Church is a major thoroughfare. By the way, it's ironic that this rezoning case is labeled twelve oh one Piscatah Church because there's not going to be any ingress or egress on Piscatah Church. It's going to be on Willoughby. So right there, it's it's not appropriate. It really should be Willoughby. And to Ms. Hightower's point, the traffic coming off and the southbound lane being one, I mean, you go there, it was set five thirty. Go there at three, three thirty, when pickup's going on at Midden Hall. You are stacked and you've got kids walking everywhere. And I'll talk about the sidewalk in a little bit because it's a sidewalk to nowhere. Compatible with the general character. The general character of Willoughby is single family homes. And again, I just showed you all the pictures of all the attached dwellings. So there are attached dwellings. Matter of fact, they developed what is called affectionately the Knowles at New Irving Park. But it's really, it was when the Tannenbaum sold the land and we had Winwood, which goes into Willoughby. They designed it the same way they designed New Irving Park and Willoughby appropriately. They didn't stack townhomes on Winwood. They had smaller houses with an ingress and egress that complements. And so even the Knowles was complementary to the original intent of what this neighborhood was designed for. It says residential, but folks, there are over fifteen classifications of residential. Goal A, the city set, citywide network of unique neighborhoods offers residents all walks of life, variety of quality housing. I just showed you and told you that that is New Irving Park. We've got every type of housing imaginable. GSO twenty forty map policies usually should generally be in scale of the neighborhood. This is not in scale and compatible with what is on Willoughby Boulevard. Cut through traffic minimized. That's a joke, ladies and gentlemen. That was in our planning and zoning. That's a joke. It's, Willoughby Boulevard is in the heart of the neighborhood. Everybody uses Willoughby. When you come through New Irving Park and you live in the neighborhood, you use Willoughby. You have to use Willoughby. And expand Greensboro City Network of Unique Neighborhoods. How is an eight-home townhome project that's not compatible with the existing residential expanding the network of unique neighborhoods at the entrance of the neighborhood? This is a detriment to the neighborhood. Sir, you're next. You know, again, I'll just say reasons this project is non-compatible with the neighborhood design and surrounding homes. Per the GSO staff report, adjacent property is single family. By the way, if you go to the map that Mr. Kurtman showed, actually, this house, which there used to be a single family home on it, and the neighborhood absolutely supports a single family. Matter of fact, you can get two single family homes on this lot, which they encourage the developer to do. Build, build two houses. We're all for it. But and that would be compatible. This does not answer, I heard, missing middle. Missing middle, it states in the in the Arizona Commission Planning, that missing middle is the housing that could be backed up to, adjacent to, and combined to four-story apartment buildings. This is at the entrance. This would create stacking. It's inappropriate. This would not be approved in other neighborhoods. There is not a doubt in my mind that this would not be improved in other neighborhoods. When I was looking up certain areas, thinking about Westridge, because Westridge was the neighborhood that really got neighborhood congress going twenty-some years ago. There's no way, if this was proposed in the interest of Westridge, that Westridge would support it. And I said in a zoning meeting that, you know, if you took two houses, like where this used to have, two houses on it, and you, somebody were to propose eight, and I actually used Ms. Hightower's neighborhood because it's off of Gate City, that I wouldn't support eight townhomes going to the entrance of her neighborhood, and I wouldn't do it on Highstone Road either. So this wouldn't be approved in any neighborhood. I already mentioned the Knowles. There's zero homes. The setback requirement was mentioned. There's plenty of other land everywhere else, and it's what we talked about with Christopher Farms, that it's properly designed. We all supported it. And think about in the next council, if they were to come in and tear up the 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 nice master plan that was developed. If you'll go next, sir. This is Emery. Nobody in this room was against Emery, Mr. Johnson's previous project. I didn't see anybody from this neighborhood come down and go against it. So it's, again, a further example of not being a NIMBY neighborhood. Next, here's the difference. Twelve oh one Piscatah Church, which really is on Willoughby, the driveways would be on Willoughby. There are no driveways on Elm, on Emery. There's a side street for easy entry on Willoughby. There's not a side street on Willoughby for easy access adjacent to the garage. There is no activity center near Willoughby and Piscatah Church. There is no activity center. That was mentioned. There is a huge activity center called Sherwood Swim and Tennis right behind the other one. The lot size on the other one is bigger. The other one development was five homes versus eight that are proposed. And of course, we all know there are drainage issues, but we're not going to worry about that. We're going to focus on the proper and improper use of land. Keep going, that was a neighborhood meeting. Keep going. He's already gone over that. This is, and there's a problem, if you look at the map, this is straight out of staff regarding the property, south of the project. And if you look on the map, there's an easement off of Piscatah Church, and the city owns the land adjacent to it, which is about an acre, that goes in. The city, water and sewer have been out there to to clean it up. And so it does need to be on the city's radar that this is a dangerous area. And if you'll keep going. And I just throw this picture up there to show the folks that spoke in opposition or support of this project. They don't get it right in District Three either. Notice these mailboxes. When we put a sidewalk in on Piscatah Church, the mailboxes are in the middle of the sidewalk. How in the hell is that ADA compliant? It's not. And I've complained about it. Nothing gets done. So just because it's District Three doesn't mean that we get it right either. They treat us the same. Now, I'm going to go back to some of the topics of Mr. Johnson, and then I'll stop, Madam Mayor. No, you know, I'll tell you, I haven't spent more time on a topic than this. And ladies and gentlemen, it is important. And it is a precedent that could be set. And it could be a precedent that could be set in your neighborhood, your neighborhood, and all nine of us. Transition into the neighborhood, more infill. Ladies and gentlemen, you don't stack a bunch of units at the entrance to one lane southbound when their folks are trying to get in and out. It's, that's not a good design. Mr. Johnson said it's a perfect intersection at Piscatah Church and Willoughby. Mr. Johnson doesn't live there. Obviously. And I like Mr. Johnson. No access points on Piscatah Church minimizes disruption. Actually, it hurts us because the entry points are on Willoughby. That clogs it up and makes it even further unsafe. And I, New Irving Park, these opportunities would be to downsize. We already have those. My mom lives in one of them. Got Barrington Place, you got Ascot Point, you got Lands End, you got the apartments across the street. Now we've got two more townhome opportunities. Flights. People are having to give up their seats. People were giving up their seats because we don't have enough flights coming to PTI. Hopefully, that'll change. We need more flights and more activity. Other projects, and I'm going to use one that's not in District Three. I'm going to use Hayden Place. That's District Four. It swimmingly passed. Lot of units on small acreage. Here's how it passed. There was zero opposition because the developer met with the neighborhood and created a project that was worthy of being supported. This is not the same as Hayden Place. I would love to have a project that had zero opposition. I think y'all would too, wouldn't you? So when we think about successful projects, you got to think about it. The sidewalk was mentioned. There's going to be a sidewalk that people can walk to. Where's it going to stop? It'll stop at his property. Where's it going to end? At his property. Where's the next sidewalk? Nowhere. The city of Greensboro owns the property two lots south, going towards Winwood. Madam Director of Planning or DOT, is there any proposal to build a sidewalk on Willoughby that I'm not aware of?
I'm not aware of the transportation plans for that area.
We're going to have a sidewalk on his property that goes to nowhere. That's insane. Send a message to developers. I I mean, I think we've been really supportive of developers. The other speakers don't even live in the neighborhood, and one lives in District Three, but in the Lake Jeanette area. None of the rest live remotely close to this, that we're in support. I already mentioned that Mr. Johnson said it was a perfectly planned neighborhood, the entrance off Willoughby and the diversity. And I want to finalize with this. I read this posting. Cheap targets for revitalization. Narrow focus goal of maximizing profits. Narrow focus goal of maximizing profits. I heard that a lot from our neighborhood, that this is the same as what has been done in Districts One and Districts Two. Maximizing profits. Inadequately engage the community. I will tell you that when we held our neighborhood meeting, we wanted a two-week's notice to try to get as many people there and informed as possible. It didn't work out for Mr. Johnson. It was all on his schedule. He had a neighborhood meeting and expected us to go where his neighborhood meeting was in one week. That's not working with the neighborhood. It's not. You want enough time to educate folks to show up to a meeting. Not everything on their calendar of the developer, but on what is the neighborhood's calendar. Prioritizing the needs of existing residents. I'm not going to make y'all stand up again, but is this prioritizing y'all's needs? Leads to projects that don't benefit the community. Revamp their land use. The city of Greensboro needs to revamp their land use and development processes. I agree with this wholeheartedly, Ms. Black. Something's wrong. We, they have to send letters out, and you only have to send it, is it seven hundred and fifty feet? I think it needs to go longer. I think that these are things we need to consider. Well, we didn't. Well, which didn't... Then we need to ask the state. Because some of these, on revamping our land use and processes, I absolutely agree with. Revitalizing neighborhoods instead of ravaging them. I agree with you. This, this doesn't revitalize, this ravages. And so, at this point, and you can, you're done, man. You're good. Thank you so much. There is a road to ten thousand. I do support the manager. But I also support neighborhoods. And I support the folks that care about the neighborhoods. And, as I do with any rezoning, I listen to this neighborhood, even though I live in it, the same as I've listened to others. And I will tell you, there's a case over in Collins Hill, when I used to represent that back fifteen years ago. And they wanted to build a student housing, which is province. And there was an old industrial plant there. It was the only district precinct I lost in like four elections. But I supported that housing. And, because I did it for the right reasons. I don't support this development, not just because I live in the neighborhood, because it not compatible in the land use of what is on this street and in this area. There's no reason to go against a properly planned neighborhood. Thank you.
Good, thanks very much, Mayor. You know, in my nearly fourteen years on council, the most difficult issues always are infill rezonings. And trust me, representing District Four, I've, I've learned this well. We've had, I think, four major infill rezonings on Friendly Avenue, if we count the church recently, which was actually not District Four, but across the street. I guess that makes five. So, it's, it's always really tough. But at the end of the day, it's, it's a land use decision. It's highest and best use of the land. It appears to me that this project of Mr. Williams meets all of the goals of the comprehensive plan. It meets certainly two major council objectives, and that's building our housing inventory. We know that we need thirty-two thousand-plus units over the next five years. And it meets our goal of being a business-friendly city. You know, it, it certainly is always preferable if a developer and a neighborhood can, can come together, try to reckon, reconcile differences that they have and make compromises and reach some consensus. Mr. Matheny, which was the reason I thought about following you, Mr. Matheny mentions the Hayden Park project. If any of you have driven up and down West Friendly Avenue, or to or from Friendly Shopping Center, or the Chopsit Friendly, recently, I think, and, and Mr. Williams, I, I think, actually used a photograph of the three-story townhomes that face Friendly, that are a part of Hayden Park. The neighborhood's street, the street going into the neighborhood there is East Avondale. And the, all of the traffic, and by the way, that's two acres, twenty-six units. You've got a little less than an acre in this project, and eight units, could be, could be fewer units, depending upon how this project goes through the technical review process. But, but eight units, at least maximum we're talking about now. So, I think, I think this is a good comparison to make. Eight units on point eight-three acres, twenty-three units on two acres. Each feeding into a, a, a very strong established neighborhood. I lived for many years at, at the Friendly West Townhome Community, which was forty-eight units at the corner of Friendly and Holden, and the, the, the street behind us was Wedgedale. Again, feeding into established old star mount. I mention Hayden Park again because there's some similarities. That is a property that slopes down from Friendly Avenue to the street running beyond, or behind, which is Edgewater. There is a very strong stream that runs along Edgewater. The little stream that I think you're talking about on this property hardly compares to the one we have, that, one, one that exists on Edgewater. So, similar, you know, similarities and differences here. With all due respect, Zach, I think it's, was maybe ingenious to say that this would not have been built in District Four. So, at the end of the day, you've elected us to use our best judgment in making decisions for this city. And in terms of rezoning, it, it really is about land use. What's appropriate and what's highest and greatest value. So, I, I know that's not what, what our citizens want to hear sometimes. You know, I'll give you another example. I think time helps dissipate opposition. And I, I'll use Hobbs Friendly as my example there. You know, Hobbs, Hobbs Friendly was a very controversial rezoning. We went through three attempts at rezoning that property. We finally rezoned it, not just for commercial, but mixed use in 2015. I know that's ten years ago. In the meantime, Mr. Carroll has acquired that property and has, has put forth and met with the neighborhood, I guess probably six, seven, eight weeks ago, his, his current plan for the development of that property. We had probably two hundred people at that neighborhood meeting. And enthusiastic reviews for, for the plan for that property. This is ten years later. So, so, we, we begin to accept things, and we begin to accept change sometimes after, after a period of years. You know, I, I appreciate very much the involvement always of neighborhoods in, in, in what's happening there and what's going on. Both the mayor and I participated in several of the meetings regarding the Hayden Park project. So, there was, there was, there was a lot of dialogue, but the, we had dialogue with Hobbs Friendly, and we've had dialogue with the others too. So, I regret that your meetings couldn't reach a bit more of a consensus than they obviously didn't. And that's always regretful. But I think these are the things that we are, are, are are out of necessity, the way that we will review this project tonight. And I hope that, at the end of the day, you will understand the votes that are taken. And I thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mary Kay.
So, since it was mentioned that I had asked the city attorney in another zoning case about land use, that is correct. I'm only going to speak about land use. First, however, I am going to mention, I think Mr. Matheny did a good job of showing all of the units that are in the area. And I also had checked into a few things because we keep talking about density, and, and I heard that there are some people that think there are not many apartments in the area. There aren't many townhomes, wants to stay single-family. Within a half-mile to three-quarters of a mile, and some right across, right beside or across the street, you have down the street Village Lofts, ninety-seven units, Finley Ridge, sixteen, Gingerly Way, twelve, Woodland Park, a hundred and eighty-four, The Point, a hundred and forty-four, The Reserve, one oh six. And a little further down the other way, Yester Oaks, a hundred and twenty-four. Then you can go up to Longdale and Piscatah Church Road, and you've got more there, Winstead Commons. So, saying that there isn't much density in this area concerns me, because I believe there is. And since it was mentioned that there was a seventy-seven-unit apartments approved in a, in a different part of town, I want to say, and I'm, I'm going to say this. I went to that community meeting off of Randall Monroe. That's the one that's being referred to. And in that community meeting, and Mr. Holston was there, and Ms. McIver was there. That community thanked the person who was developing that the whole evening, for thirty, forty-five minutes, how well they built, how good they built everything. So, I, that's why I'm talking about this today. Because it came at me that, you know, all of a sudden, there were people against it. But the community meeting I went to, everyone was for it. So, so that concerns me a little bit. Because now, whether it's this neighborhood or anyone else's neighborhood, when people show up and say that they are for or against, we appreciate that. We really do, because it shows you care. I went to the community meetings for this one. And, you know, I know Mr. Johnson couldn't go to one of them, but, you know, I was there and listened to everyone, listened to him. And, and the biggest thing to me, one of the biggest things, and I know this is getting on a personal level, but we talk about apartments in our neighborhoods. Well, I voted against my neighborhood. You know Brassfield Park Apartments? Okay, they're getting ready to do, oh goodness, an expansion of three hundred and thirty-six on that property. And I could go through and say, "I don't want this." You know, "It's not good." But I saw that the land was going to be used in an appropriate way. I don't believe this, this area, I don't believe this land is being used appropriately. I think if there were two residential dwellings, that would be appropriate. Because when you talk about density in the area... Yeah, I'm not looking for applause, honestly. But, you know, when you talk about density in the area, and you want to say that, that a, a neighborhood does not have anything like other areas in their neighborhood, Zach gave perfect examples. Yes, they do. And they accepted them willingly. So, if I'm looking at this land use only, as I was charged to do, I cannot approve this rezoning.
Okay, as I sit here and I think of Joanne, who I sat next to, because to me, I, I don't take my decisions lightly. And I am very, very data-informed, be it qualitative or quantitative data. But I believe in going to where the work is happening. And as I sat there next to Joanne and heard her concerns, as I, where's, where's Mr. Ed? As I walked the neighborhood, and I walked that neighborhood several times. And many of the concerns that were brought up as I walked the neighborhood, as I walked and spoke with many of the residents of the community, some of the issues that came up were safety and traffic. And so, one of the things was, I didn't just take it as, "Oh, the number of traffic, the number of accidents." I went and looked that information up to see how many accidents have happily, actually happened on Willoughby and Piscatah in the past, let's say, two or three years. And when I pulled that data, I was able to see it was two accidents that have happened in the past year. Then when I pulled the data, be able to see how many accidents happened in the neck, you know, in the past five years, so to speak. And it came up to ten. So, again, I listened to the concerns. I walked the neighborhood. I see some of the biggest concerns, where I feel like there's opportunities for us to collaborate, where the city is responsible for things. But at the end of the day, I believe in, when I'm looking at this judicious process, it's about, this is a concept. A concept of the potential of what can happen in a community and in a neighborhood. But when I'm making a decision and thinking, "What's the best decision and how I can show up in my values and cultures and alignment?" I can't, when you talk about land use, I can't sit here and say, "This can happen and this can happen." The next right step for me in this process is to say, "We have a concept, it goes to zoning commission, they agreed upon it and say, 'Let's go to the next step,' and we're here today." And then the next right step is for TRC, who are the expert matters, that have the professional and technical expertise to say what can and can't be done. So, if I'm looking at it and saying, "What's the best choice that I can make in this option right now?" Is to let those who are the expert matters to make the right decision, because I can't truly say yes or no. I can go out there and have a concept or think something can happen. But I want you all to know that I heard you, I listened to you. I have been out there, I have walked several times. I've taken several pictures, I've met with several of you all. And I've participated in the community meetings to really be able to make sure I am hearing clearly, hearing the voice of community. But when I think about this, I too live in District Three. This is my community, this is my neighborhood. But as I sit in this seat, I'm not only representing members in my district, but I'm also looking at the districts of the whole entire city. And so, when we're doing things, not necessarily making things from an equal standpoint, but how are we being equitable in our decision-making and making sure we're following a process? And if there's something in the process that we're doing, what are some of the modifications that can happen to be able to say, "Hey, we need, maybe need to look at this?" So, I want you all to know, yes, am I going to sit here and I'm gonna go for this, going to, to, to rezon it, to classify the rezoning? Yes, but it wasn't made, it wasn't made loosely because I deeply took into all the consideration, went out there and researched, asked the questions, but always came back to, "What's the process that's put in place? And am I doing my due diligence with following the process that we have in place?" Because this is one of many opportunities that are going to present to us, where we're gonna have to make these hard decisions.
Dr. Wells.
Which one? I didn't know which one she called first.
Dr. Wells, then Sharon, then Hugh.
I remember when, when I was campaigning the last time, the question was asked, "What do you think is going to be the toughest, the challenge that you will be faced with in this next term?" And I said, "It's going to be dealing with infill, land use, because people don't like change." We have to have more housing in Greensboro. Everybody agrees to that. But it's okay to put the housing someplace else. Not, and, and I want you to give your, your representative, Mr. Matheny, a hand, because he, he's fighting for you and made an excellent speech. But, we have to think about the whole of Greensboro. We have to talk about the ten thou, the road to ten thousand. Even before that happened, we knew we were gonna have to have more housing. And we cannot have just two types of houses. And that middle, what do they call them? That, that middle space in there, about four or five different kinds of houses, duplexes and quadruplexes and, and triple houses, all of those. And before it's over, that's what we're gonna have in Greensboro. And everybody might as well get used to it. Because when these things come to us, we are going to have to make decisions that are best for Greensboro, not for individual communities. So, we've got people fussing at us from the east, fussing at us from the west, north, south, all over. Because we try to do what is right. And it's not easy. We got friends that live in these neighborhoods. We've got associates that we've been dealing with for years. We don't want to lose friendships and all of that, but it, it's not about that. We have to do what is right. And we're going to have to open spaces. Now, the thing that I like about this project, not only is it gonna be in a place that, you know, we, we haven't had anything on that corner, but it's going to look so modern. We, you know, it is.
Please stop.
Of course, you don't wanna change, I, I understand. You want it to look just like it's looked for years and years. But it's not going to, I'm just telling you, giving you a little bit of advice, I've lived a long time, things change. Whether you want it or not, they change. And you get along much better if you go along with some of the changes, rather than trying to kick against the prick, 'cause it's not gonna work. It won't work. So, if, if you, I know you're gonna be upset tonight, and, uh, what Ms. Hoffman said, ten years later, you'll look back on it and you'll say, my goodness.
Quiet, please.
Well, I'll tell you from experience. I'm telling you from experience, life changes and you get along much better if you go with the flow. The only three things you can do, that's it, you can, you can accept it...
I'm gonna have to ask you to please stop talking, or we're gonna have to ask you to leave.
Yeah, you can fight, you can flee, or you can flow. And I've found it's better to flow, 'cause when you fight, if you don't, if you stay and don't, don't move, you're fighting. So, it's might as well flow, you get along much better. Maybe somebody's hearing what I'm saying, but I'm telling you from experience, all that fighting and pushing, it doesn't help. So, you won't agree with your decision tonight, but it'll get better.
Mrs. Hightower?
So, one of the first things I was, uh, impressed by Mr. Johnson's presentation, um, was that he went to TRC first. Um, and I know that many in other communities wanna see developers do that, at least to get a general idea of what they're facing. So, they know how to lay out their project, um, and what they may run into. And then they talk to the community, um, which is something, sometime in our community, we're lucky if we get one meeting, much less get four, five, or six. They don't even sometime wanna reach out to us, which is why I pushed for the seven hundred and fifty feet, um, notification up to the state level, so that people would be more included in a process. And so, that's important to people who sometime don't know about rezonings until the very last minute. In this instance, you all have been working since February. That's a long time, to meet and talk, the developer postponed, continued, continuing to talk, um, and come back and listen at you and hear what you've had to say. Yes, I brought up traffic, um, and Mr. Metheny's right, I live off Gate City Boulevard. You wouldn't want anything right off Gate City Boulevard, right there. But trust you me, all my entrances are on the side street too. So, you can get into the neighborhood from the side streets safely. Um, so, that's something that has been considered as well. Um, so, and this project is different, it's unique, it's nice. It is upscaling in a way that we wanna make sure still continues character of neighborhood, but brings in new people. Type of development, we wanna see more of on the east side of Greensboro that we constantly talk about. When you talk about sidewalks, um, we have lots of places in East Greensboro that have sidewalks to nowhere. People in wheelchairs can't get down, um, they have to roll in the street. And so, do we need to put more money in sidewalks? We absolutely do. Um, but if the project is putting a sidewalk there, at least that's a beginning. Um, and so, I'm pretty sure that as we look at how we wanna develop our neighborhoods, um, sidewalks is important. But tonight, we're talking about land use. And traffic is part of the land use as well. When you bring up certain other issues, we have to address those as well, um, as part of that land use. But we have to make sure we're using land appropriately. And in this instance, the developer has scaled down his project. He's conditioned it down to eight, he's moved the entrances, he's considered parking off the street. Um, and in some neighborhoods that I represent, you can't even get through the neighborhood, because there's cars on both sides. I had to back up the other day down the street. If you know how I drive, that won't save. And so, it's a concern when you can't even get through your community. And I think Mr. Johnson has done a very great job of being very diligent about hearing all of your concerns and all of your comments. Um, and then finally, I, I understand, um, there's something that I have to talk to zoning and planning about, because I've heard something twice tonight that talks about a master plan. Does that still exist for community? Because I've never heard it until tonight. And if that's the case, it needs to be incorporated in every area plan. That we have a master plan community. Not sure if I like the word, might need to change the wording, not too thrilled with the word master. Um, but that's something we need to consider as well. Um, but quite honestly, I'm very impressed by what Mr. Johnson has done at the Emery. Very upscale, respecting your area, and that's what we need in more, uh, developers to come into our area and respect that area. And yes, I did vote for the, um, Thiesman project, that was seventy-seven apartments. Part of my rationale was because I knew the developer, he was local, his products were good, well-maintained, well-taken care of. That's what you want, not somebody who's gonna be an absent landlord. Mr. Johnson will not be absent. He will be right here, the local developer, that we can touch and talk to and that you can communicate with. And I think that's a very important part of this equation. Um, and so, for me tonight, um, I am gonna support, uh, the project. I think that it is, um, one that just starts the beginning of our road to ten thousand on the type of housing, the type of quality that we wanna see done, uh, in our community, particularly as we build up in East Greensboro. And East Greensboro is growing, we have to be real and honest about it, and it is growing. People are coming here, and they gotta have somewhere to stay that's attainable for them. And we have to be more mixed-use communities, um, and that's what I see here. A little bit more mixed-use. Um, so, I'm gonna support the project tonight, because I think that this is a good project. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the first thing I wanna do is I want to, I wanna thank the neighbors in the community for, for coming together. There's, there's really nothing better to see than to have your neighbors to come together for a common cause. Uh, I wanna thank the developer, Mr. Johnson, for, uh, one, bringing this potential investment to Greensboro, uh, but also in working with and communicating with and engaging with the community. There are some times when we have cases such as this, that there isn't that type of, uh, engagement. It's one side gambling, one way or the other, that I'm just gonna roll the dice and, and try to get five votes one way or the other. But if we're gonna succeed in this, in this Greensboro world, it's gonna be together. And not always agree, oftentimes, uh, disagree, but not being disagreeable. I had the opportunity to attend two of those meetings, one sponsored by Mr. Johnson over at the Craft Center, and the other, uh, by the neighborhood in the Lewis Center. And I was very appreciative to be at both and learned a lot of information at both meetings. I had the opportunity to walk the property with Susan and Donna and some others, uh, down into the bushes, down, uh, closer to the stream, so to speak. Uh, I used to work in that general area, just, uh, for about seventeen years, I was just down the street, uh, near Wireless Drive, and spent a lot of time back and forth and into the Willoughby Drive area. The challenge that we have as council members is of the highest and best use of this property, of land use of this property. We also have the challenge of ensuring that we have housing diversity in our community. That is, price point, type, and also location. It's important to me when it comes to our housing, with the successes that we've had on this council in bringing major organizations to our Greensboro community, also retaining major organizations, so that we can remain a thriving community. I often say that if you're not growing, then you're dying. And for me, that growing, that thriving has to be in all of our communities. We may talk about them in districts, but it's all of our community, the entire, the entirety of it all has to be growing and thriving. And talking about that housing diversity, type, price, location, uh, it's gonna mean that we're all gonna have to get comfortable with the uncomfortable. And that means density, that means being a little bit closer to others than we were before. It doesn't feel good, especially for, for those of us who've lived in our communities for fifteen, ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. It's challenging. I think someone mentioned, it's, it's change, it's, it's being accustomed to change. You know, the old book, Who Moved My Cheese? And that's where we are today. I will tell you that the density that comes, um, it's, 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 it's coming. And it's coming to all of our communities, each and every one of them. Uh, if you haven't heard about it today, it's, there's gonna be a, a zoning meeting, there's gonna be a council meeting where we are talking about a new development that may be a little bit different from what you currently live in, closer to you, nearer to you, having some kind of impact. We've talked a little bit about those things that, uh, concern us. We talked about the parking, we talked about the trash pickup, we talked about the stream, we talked about a variety of things, public safety, USPS mail service. Fortunately, the process that we're experiencing right now, where you have planning and zoning, and then city council, should it pass here, it then goes to our, our TRC, and that's where they'll work through all of those details. But this is not a unique process. This is the same process that, I'll use examples, that Roy Carroll goes through. It's the same process that David Couch will be going through with the Summerfield project. It's all the very same process. Is it comfortable? Not necessarily. Is it the reality of where we are? It is. And I'll say that, as the side note, yes, we, we do need more housing in Greensboro, but we need all types of housing. I've heard the term missing middle. We need affordable, we need attainable, we need missing middle, we need the white picket fences, we need all of it. Because if we're not growing, then we're dying. I do believe that the approval of this application, uh, is in the global public benefit for the city of Greensboro. And because of that, Madam Mayor, I will be supporting this application.
Thank you. I, I wish I had spoken before Hugh, because he said just about everything that I was thinking. Um, we are really at an inflection point in our community. You know, we are the third largest city in North Carolina. I think that sometimes we lose a fa- we lose sight of that fact, because we have the small-town feel. But we are growing, we've had amazing, uh, job announcements in the last three years. People need places to live. Um, I'm part of the North Carolina Metro Mayors, and I will tell you, every single city, town has the same issue when it comes to housing, that their justice is not enough. There are people moving here from all over the place. Um, some people consider that a good thing, others will say it's not such a good thing. But the fact is, if we don't build houses, we're just gonna drive up the price of the houses that we have right now. And we are becoming more and more unaffordable, not only in housing, but in rent. So, when we talk about attainability, is we want housing at every single price point, not just what people consider affordable housing. It's attainable housing, it's whatever people can, whatever people can afford. Um, infill developments are the worst. Um, we usually get a, um, a room full of people, maybe not quite this full, but we get a room full of people when it's gonna change, um, something close in their neighborhood. But Zach, I think you did a great job showing that there were townhouses all around Irving Park. And while it had a master developer share, and I think we call it like a pud now, where it's the same thing as a master developer. Um, you know, we had a huge rezoning back in two thousand and two for Corey Corporation on Cone Boulevard, and that was for four hundred and eighty units. And it passed, they haven't built them yet, but they do have the zoning on Cone by Kleborn for four hundred and eighty units. That's, that's a lot. Excuse me? They're building on market first, yes. Um, but we do need, we do need housing, and we need it at every price point, and we all have to pitch in. And, um, you know, it ultimately will be the decision of TRC, how many units can be built there. It will be up to them to look at the traffic and to look at the stormwater runoff and, and everything else. So, while this might be an approval for eight, it doesn't mean necessarily that eight will be built there. That's when the engineers sit down and see really what is feasible, when they look at the topography and the stormwater runoff. Um, so, eight would be a maximum. Um, I am gonna support this, and I hate that I can't support my friend Zach, because I know this means an awful, awful lot to him. But when we talk about, um, more building all over the city, it means every single neighborhood, and it means Irving Park also. So, I will be supporting this as well.
Moved by Adam.
Um, so, I think we need a statement of consist- consistency.
The Greensboro City Council believes that its action to approve the rezoning request for the property at twelve oh one Piska Church Road from R three residential single-family three to CDRM twelve conditional district residential multifamily twelve to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty forty comprehensive plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future-built form map and future land use map. The proposed CDRM twelve zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. And the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Dr. Wells. Um, council, please vote. Mrs. Hoffman's screen has malfunctioned, um, and your vote is, okay, there you go. And that passes six to two. Um, we are going to take a ten-minute break, um, that'll give us a chance to kinda turn the chamber over.